Okay. Being seven o'clock, I'm gonna bring the Dunbar and Board of Selectmen meeting to order. It's Thursday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. All three selectmen are present. Tom Administrator. We have the Transfer Station Department head here, Rudy Bone. Leo Martell is recording for the public and Linda Nickerson will be uploading to the town website as we're receiving it. And the road agent just showed up. So, we have small business gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of March eleventh. Answering.
Second.
Motion's been made second, any discussion?
He said, she said, no, we're agreed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Can I have some humor?
Okay. That being done, I will conduct a public comment. Anything, Woody?
Just a quick couple of updates for you.
Okay.
They came in this week. He replaced the roof on the attendant shed.
Oh, nice.
The hazard trees have been done.
Yep.
He's coming back to look at the translucent panels on the roof and get your price on taking care of them because they're leaking still. And in the next week or two, I finally got a company that will come out, let of the town truck. They'll be out in the next week or two to let there the town truck.
Okay, got another question for you.
Sure.
Did the guy that you used for tree work, did he talk with Don about doing tree work in any of the cemeteries?
I have no idea.
Maybe you could forward his name to Don just to make sure that Don has another person to get a price from?
Sure.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update, Woody. On the next thing we have on the agenda, I guess Jeff Crosby, road agent here for discussion of the Kelsey Road Fee. I think Donna had sent some minutes out from that meeting and Mike has a copy of them.
Thank you.
Green.
Okay. That's the pertinent section?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna recuse myself because I'm the, I was the owner of the lot at the time and let the other two board members discuss this with Jeff.
Okay. Jeff, as you recall, there was a subdivision, one new lot was created by Dave Knoll.
Yep.
And a four thousand dollar exaction fee was created.
Yes.
The question, the question was, it was gonna be used towards a culvert and then, or anything, anything else deemed necessary?
Yes.
And the thing is, we have a statement of your activities of what you spent on.
Yep.
You clearly exceeded doubling the amount. In other words, you matched it.
Matched it.
And so, the only thing is, I'd like to just, if you could go through for the courtesy, for the benefit of Bob and myself, what these expenses were specifically. These are just generalizations. I'll show you these.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, don't have.
You have it, okay? That would be very helpful.
Can I just say for the record that Donna White works in building planning and is going through a lot of our records that we have been negligent in either closing out in or been tracking or haven't been very efficient in tracking? And this one came to her attention and asked if I had addressed it and released it? And it, since it's gone to additional weeks. So, I brought it before the board to ask for a recommendation because clearly it's an accounting issue.
This is not normally a selectman's issue, but we've got involved only from a standpoint that, as Lynn said, it's an accounting issue. We're about eleven months in arrears of distributing the money. We're cleaning house and trying to clear the records. And we just wanna make sure we're doing everything but to look and we'll go from there. You have the floor, sir.
All right, well, as you stated, it was an exaction fee charged to the Knoll subdivision that was payable on, or when someone pulled a building permit on that lot. And the purpose of it was to do road improvements to Kelsey Road. What the original intention was, was to change a culvert that needed some work in front of that house in between Montalona Road. And that's kinda how it all started. And that was the intention, but then, at some period after that, I can't remember that time, Mike Guyney, a neighbor down the street, came in with a sort of a conceptual consultation with the planning board on doing a subdivision on his property. So, when he did that, we, you know, had a lengthy meeting and told him that he probably would be either an exaction fee or some road improvements needed to be done. And from the road department side of it, I was gonna require or talk with the planning board about doing some road improvement work and that would be on property he owns. And it was in the vicinity of that culvert. So, I decided to hold off on doing that pending seeing what was gonna transpire with his subdivision. He went away and didn't come back until like this summer, like six years plus after that. In the meantime, we had, there was a need to create a turnaround at the end of Kelsey Road because we did not have an adequate one. We had some issues ongoing down there with turning around. So, we made a turnaround down there. And at the same time when we were making the turnaround, we did an improvement to a hill on the class five section of Kelsey Road. Cut some trees, widened out, cleaned out some ditches, removed some rocks, et cetera. And when you see the two amounts for Crosby construction, that was basically labor, equipment, time for Crosby construction. That was done along with our town employee, Peter Gamache, and town dump truck and road grader, stuff like that. We don't typically bill or anything for that. It's kinda, it's in-house money, so to speak. And we don't even really keep track of the amount of days he spent there, whatever. Kinda just all part of the thing. So, obviously, there was no bill for that because it's all in-house money. The other two things were Pike Industries and that was for crush gravel put on the road.
Was that crush gravel the entire length of the road or where was that?
Uh, the majority of it was in the hill and the terminal.
Okay.
In those areas. I mean, that's, you know, I can't remember the exact.
Bob, do you have any other questions?
So, there was a cost that could be attributed to an exaction fee?
Yes, because if you went back and read the thing, it was improvements to Kelsey Road.
Familiar with the Souls one?
Yeah.
Because I was here when they came in, you know, so I just wanna make sure.
Souls was, Souls was a little different scenario because there were two things going on there. They were required to upgrade a class six road, which they were receiving a building permit for house structure on to certain specifications, and I can't remember exactly what they were, but that was their requirement.
But it was the same thing, you had some additional.
Yes, and then there was an exaction fee put in place for upgrades to Holmes Road, which we, we did that as well. So, I guess you're, the answer is, no, we didn't spend it specifically on that culvert or replacement of the culvert, upgrading the culvert, but we didn't spend.
But you still spent it for that.
We spent an equal amount of money. It's my understanding, from what I've read and what the planning board has told me, that you don't just take that exaction fee, you have to basically, it's like a match. The town has to contribute at least an equal amount with it. And the exaction fee is, only can be used on that road that subdivision is affecting. And for improvements, you can't give it to the fire department to buy a fire hose or the police department or anything else. It's a road improvement expense. The Souls was the first one we dealt with, and that was a little rocky for a couple of other reasons, which got settled eventually. The Knoll subdivision was the second one that we acted on and, you know, that's what we did there. As, as we're sitting here today, we still have two outstanding exactions fees on Guile Hill Road. And the planning board has gone both ways. Sometimes they charge an exaction fee, sometimes we require in-kind work done. The downside of the exaction fee is the town doesn't realize the money until a building permit is pulled on that piece of property. So, essentially, you could go years without getting it. And you still, the road needs some improvement. Whereas, if we ask for in-kind before the plan is recorded, sometimes it's a better avenue for the town to go, so the planning board goes both ways.
Was that not just on, recently on Guile Hill Road?
Excuse me?
Was that recently?
Yeah, yeah, just recently in Guile Hill Road it did, also on County Road, some rocks removal there. So, I mean, I don't think the planning board really knows which way is the best way to go. But, that's the history of it. That's what we spent.
Bob, do you have any other questions?
No.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with, we liquidated this account and returning the money to, I'd like to return the four thousand dollars to the budget of the road agent. Are you comfortable with that?
I don't have a problem with that.
I'd like to say something as the landowner.
Okay, we're gonna open up to the public.
Yeah, I was waiting for you guys to finish.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, leave your public comment as in butter.
All I'd like to state is on note number three, which are the meeting minutes from the planning board meeting that night, note number three says there is to be a four thousand dollar exaction fee to be used for replacement of a culvert and other work as may be determined by the road agent. Now, you want a copy of it, Bob?
I said, here we go, this one here.
Now.
That's all that?
There's the, here are the meeting minutes there, there's a little modified there.
There's the yellow.
Not the yellow on the other page, Bob, see the little check mark there?
Okay, yeah.
If you wanna read that one there. Those were the actual meetings from the minutes that night. And I remember in that discussion, there was talk of, the culvert is basically at the end of the driveway and is very close to the lot, it's very close in proximity to Kelsey Road. And the work that was to be done on the road was supposed to be from that driveway down towards Montalona Road because Kelsey Road was a very short distance up there where that lot was. It wasn't supposed to be on the other end of the road, wasn't supposed to be used as part of that turnaround. And that's the problem I have, there was road work done on the road, but it wasn't done on the end where the lot was. And that's where it was talked about at that meeting that night, and Jeff can clear up that. That's where it was supposed to be used and ended up being used on the other end of the road, which has no proximity to this lot.
Well, I understand the, his logic for not immediately making a determination of the culvert. However, he did use it to improve the road, sections of the entire road from widening, a few tree removals, some gully, some edge removal of debris and the turnaround, which the turnaround facilitates the entire road during the winter during a.
So, that talk did not happen at that planning board that night about working on the other end of that road?
No, but the thing is, there is a statement in there that, if I could read the statement. The statement in there, which leaves a lot of discretion, it was never exclusively just for the culvert. And the thing is, it says specifically to, not, including but not limited to the costs associated with the repair, but not limited to the culvert.
That's because we talked about some gravel work going from that driveway down to Montalona Road, as I just discussed.
That's not stipulated in the minutes and it's not stipulated in this decision.
I think it is in those meeting minutes, the way it's read.
Well, the thing is, minutes are one thing, this is a notice of decision. And that's what I'm gonna go, that's what I feel is the more of the legal document, notice of decision.
And have you guys read the RSA that controls these?
I have not specifically read the RSA that controls these.
I would think that we should read that RSA to have a complete understanding of it.
Well, the thing is, then, I'm not on the planning board right now, the thing is, I could read the RSA. However, I'm looking at, I'm looking at my road agent as a subject matter expert, someone who's already used the exaction fee in other city areas of town, who's been drawn in the court successfully and defended the town in the use of exaction fees. What are you asking me to do as a, as a citizen here?
I just wanna know, I'm sure it's been a while since Jeff read that RSA. As a board, I wanted to make sure you read the RSA because the RSA controls the time limits on that. And it might control where the work is to be done on that road, and I wanted to make sure that the selectman read it to make a proper decision.
Well, rather than the selectman read, if we have to get a legal opinion, I'd be willing to do that, but that's gonna cost the town more money just for a legal opinion.
I didn't ask for the.
No, but the thing is, I can't, no, I'm not gonna, I can read the RSA, but.
I think when you read the RSA, you can understand it fine by reading it, Mike.
Okay. Bob, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm reading this too, and I see that it covers other work associated with it. That's exactly what happened with the Souls to start out with, you know? What you were gonna do, expand it from what it was gonna be, so, you know? I don't know, looking at from what they have here, I would think that the exaction fee should be returned to the town rather than to the owner, but.
It doesn't need to be returned to the town because the town already has it.
Needs to be transferred over, so just.
Transferred over, yeah. But reading that, from that, it says not limited to, so he's done other work. And we have a copy of what the work was for, and it does benefit. So, that, that whole road, especially so you can get through, you know, the turnaround was important to have. Removal trees, if all that work is included in his figures.
The simple fact is, we did a turnaround for a one-year period of time, we don't even have the turnaround now.
That's besides the point.
You know, you might say it's besides the point, but I want Jeff to speak to the fact, when at that meeting, we never talked about working on the other end of that road. We talked about going from the driveway down, and that's the important part here.
Yeah, he is correct in that, that statement. However, yeah, there were two things going on, the turnaround was not even an issue at that point because we were allowed to turn around and miss the Guyney's property at that time, as the town had done for numerous years before that. And that all came to an end, you know, through court cases and wrangling back and forth, and it still isn't resolved to this day. And that is true. And the other factor was, he wasn't even on the radar for a subdivision at that time. And I, probably an error, shouldn't have thought in those terms, but I thought, well, his subdivision was probably gonna move along, and we'd be in the same situation. And I didn't wanna do work that was gonna be, I guess, be redundant or redone or require something else. That's, that was my judgment of why I did it, and I, I didn't, shame on me, I didn't consult anybody, I took it upon myself to do it, thinking on the terms of it was a road improvement, but it wasn't the road improvement we had talked about in the planning board meeting. Dave is correct in that thing, but.
If it was talked about, worked on the entire road, I would say you guys are, you know, within your rights, but it was talked about being used from that culvert and that driveway down to the.
The minutes don't reflect that, right?
The whole thing though, it says not limited to, that's the part that kinda is tough. And, you know, you changed the turnaround twice. You had it one place and then you ended up having to move it. So, I don't know, say, if the, if monies were spent for that, for improvements on that road, and from what I was reading, when you improve the road, you're already expending money that affects that exaction fee.
If no money was expended, I would see the plan to return to the applicant. However, since money was expended in support of that road, in the entire residence of that road, the turnaround was actually for the plow, and the plow does start at the beginning on Montalona and goes all the way up. It helps all residents on that road, so that was an improvement made at that time. And it was well within the timeframe of the six years where you get to use the, those dollars for that positive improvement. I will read with, well, I'll read the regulation that you make reference to, and I'll do it out of fairness. I'll ask Bob to read the regulation too.
Yeah, forward it to him.
Yeah, and I don't think the road agent has come in, we see, we hear loud and clear.
Yeah. I do know there is a term in there, it says it has a six-year limit or six-year life. And my understanding, once you read it, that will be clear on that. Some of the other fine about where you spent it, however, I'm not sure, but I do know it has a six-year life.
And I, I think we got, we got the testimony from the road agent, I'm happy with that.
It probably would be worth investigating, because the way this reads, it says not limited to, you know?
It wasn't limited to just the culvert, but what I'm trying to tell you, from the meeting. And as you know, minutes aren't verbatim, you take them in general. And what they were talking about, not limited to, it was from that culvert down, there was supposed to be some gravel put on the road. Because in the springtime, that end of the road gets real spongy. And that's what was talked about at the meeting, wasn't being talked about working on the whole other end of the road because that lot didn't affect the rest of that road. So, if you're not gonna consider that that meeting minutes, and Jeff right here in front of you telling you that it was meant to be used for this side of the road, down here, you know, it's only, was it three hundred feet up the road, Jeff? That lot's not very.
Yeah, it is, whatever.
Did you put gravel at that end of the road too?
Not at the time that we did all that other work. I mean, as a maintenance thing, yes, we have been on a regular basis, put crushed stone there when it has become muddy, which is, seems to be a habit these last couple of years. I saw, I mean, yes, we put some gravel on there, but not as a project.
Okay.
So, what I wanna say is, I don't think reading the RSA, if you're not gonna consider where the work was supposed to be done, will help any because all it states in there is the work to be done within six years.
Okay, then, the thing is, I really think the turnaround, which came up after the fact, again, you have to, you gotta realize, you got a road agent sitting there saying he's got a couple of things going on, a potential subdivision, which would destroy all the work if he puts a culvert in, he might have to redo it again, that'd be a waste of town money. And then he's got an issue that's a quagmire when it comes to the turnaround, where one doesn't wanna use what we've been using. So, turnaround supports the entire road, and that was, that was essential to make things smoother and maintain the travel access for all residents along the road. And I think that's a justifiable expense, and I support the road agent, how he uses his best discretion to make an improvement that would support all the residents, include the new, the new lot. And I, I support where he went. I think that's a valid execution of the four thousand dollars. And it was more than four thousand dollars, by the town, it was nine thousand dollars. You meant, you more than exceeded the amount spent. Bob?
Well, again, I have to, I'm looking at that sentence, and unfortunately, this is what's in front of us, and it says not limited to.
And so, I'd be happy with just, Bob, if you have, if you have consensus, I'd say we go ahead and release the money back to the town.
I guess I'd have to concur.
Can I just speak on the accounting part of this subject?
The thing is, I think it was unfair, for the record, I wanna go on record that the town was, was amiss and we're eleven months behind the power curve, and I apologize to the applicant because we, decision should have been made eleven months ago.
Correct.
And I do apologize, that was a fault on the town, but it doesn't change the fact that the money was executed in a timely manner and, I think, in appropriate way.
So, unfortunately, in my time at the town, I've experienced this same problem three times. One was Jacqueline Drive. Stayed on the books for years and years and years, and nobody ever paid attention to it, even though there were thousands of dollars spent for the purpose of the improvements, and it went unnoticed. So, I think the lack of proper staffing that can monitor it, departments communicating to each other to make sure that the, these items are tracked and then communicating with the road department that we're monitoring these things and where the expenses that we're approving are clear enough for us to be able to continue, maintain a spreadsheet that documents that information and/or, you know, even the reporting of the treasurer, she puts in a year beginning and ending, but there's no reference of when that bond was established. So, there are, there's room for improvements from all of us. I think we have a pretty good staff now that we're all trying to stay on top of these things. And I hope that in going forward, we can continue to do that. Because like you said, we have two more outstanding, and it's a matter of making sure that we.
Spend the money appropriately or refund it appropriately.
Right, and, and do it in a timely.
Fashion.
Fashion, yeah.
Bob?
See, and I, I agree, unfortunately, it doesn't help right now the people that come before us, but I'm, I'm even reading this, Dave, and it says any other work that comes before him. So, he's already spent more than, even not touching the culvert, he's already spent more than the four thousand dollars. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking at both, and one says not limited, so I don't know what to say. It looks like it should be returned to the town. Step by step.
Yep. Whatever you guys decide.
Okay, then, so be it, I think we have consensus. We'll leave you to make that accounting adjustment.
Yeah.
Thank you for keeping on topic from going forward, I think we've looked at this as a potential for improvement of the town administration. Thank you, Chair, for coming in and giving us your perspective.
We are, thank you.
All set.
Good night.
I really think there should have been more clarity as to, so that we know exactly that it has to include the culvert. It doesn't, the way you read it in either statement, it doesn't lead you to believe it's just a culvert.
You know, when you come in as an applicant, as you guys have stated, you shouldn't have to be the one correcting the minutes and or the decision to make sure that it's accurate to what was said that night, but.
You know, historically, the town has had problems with it, we've been in board over exactions fees. We've prevailed, but still, it's a, it is room for improvement.
I don't know as we've had one that's gone smoothly, to be honest with you, so.
We haven't, for the last.
No, the other.
I think we should look at.
The Souls took us to court.
As a town, we should look at how those are handled, maybe have the work done before the building permits and then.
And the thing is, I think what they did on Guile Hill, as an example, I was on the board, just, I was exiting the board as you were coming on. On Guile Hill, they did work in kind.
Right.
And the work in kind allowed, for the public, work in kind allowed some road improvements to be done before the building permits were pulled. And normally, an exaction fee is only pulled when the building permit is pulled. But this way, the, it actually helps the person making the subdivision because it makes the lots more sellable in the sense that they got a nice road that supports those, those lots.
Maybe that's something the planning board should consider when they make their decisions.
They are on the new ones.
Because County Road was the same way, that road looks great now that they did that last thing, you know, it didn't cost the town anything.
It's a kind of a different twist they're putting on it, and I think work in kind may be the improvements to the road that are done prior to building permits.
Yeah.
Okay, going on to the next subject, we need Linda Landry with our appointment to take over, her thing.
Run away.
She is running the car?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, she's coming.
Hi, Linda.
There.
We have some appointment paperwork, Linda.
You do, shake out those wrists. Get your stack.
Do you have a list for you, Linda?
You just go beat me to the punch. You were right on top.
Thank you, dear.
I'm so welcome. You just want.
That's the whole stack, huh?
That is.
Well, we'll have to read them, right?
No, it does not, it will stack, wait, wait. Lynn, do you wanna just hand David the list and he can rally them up?
Yeah, sure, we can, we'll get it back for the recording.
Yes, we'll have it back for the recording.
Yeah.
Okay. We will still have to read those as they come up, unfortunately, right?
Did you wanna do them at the end of the meeting? There'll just be quite a few of them.
Might not be a bad idea.
Because you're gonna have to sign.
What do you guys think you want?
I guess, I don't, I don't wanna keep people here when they have to, so I'm flexible. We'll do them at the end if.
All right, let's go out of order and we'll put these together here, Bob. Some people may not wanna stay for that. What we're doing is reassigning our appointments for the different committees through town. And if you can remember, we all three have to sign them and we have to state the term of the committee, so, and the person there.
He'll be in the minutes.
So, it chews up a little bit of time, so, I'm gonna move down the list a little bit. Linda, you have anything else other than that for us?
I just have some housekeeping and updating stuff. If somebody else wants to go, I got tons of work to do, keep me occupied.
Okay, the appointment of officers must be in that, or did you make a list?
I did not, I assume you would have that list, what, available?
Yes. That list.
All right, we'll do that at the end as well.
The selectmen's, about the selectmen's duties or no?
The selected representatives on different committees?
Yeah.
Papers are generated in that stack that it did us.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go off and we're gonna sign the MS two thirty-two report for appropriations that were actually voted on during town meeting. This paperwork is due twenty days after the annual meeting. And Lynn has put together the appropriate budget here, and it reflects the additional money that was added in during the town meeting.
To include the warrants?
Yeah. Yeah.
So the thing is, we have to submit, that's the minutes with that, correct?
That's part of the town clerk's responsibility, but these forms are related to the budget.
Okay. When are the minutes due?
The 20 days after, I think.
Will we have them this year, you think, Linda?
I certainly hope so.
Okay, let's just copy of what I think. And Lynn has all the backup paperwork for this back at the office. I'm going to do some mailbox items here. Oh, Bob, can you put this with them when we're done? We had one residence in the mailbox items, one resident came in, actually sent an email, Allison Reese. She was wondering what it would take to have a discussion ongoing regarding the change of the name of Board of Selectmen to a general, gender-neutral term, Select Board. She was asking if it would require a petition or a town vote.
Okay.
Can you put, you can put the date on there, Bob, that's fine, today's the 18th.
Okay, does that go right after 20 days after the meeting?
No, just sign under your name, put the date on there.
Okay, under my name?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. We'll have a quick discussion about that.
Is it set by statute? Or, I don't know.
I don't know, Linda, maybe you could look into that for us?
Would you like me to look into that?
Yeah. I know that there are some boards that are called Select Man and then Select Men, so that was interesting to me, but I've never seen Select Board, so I guess we'll wait, get some feedback from Linda on that, before we have a discussion about that.
I would say it's not a high priority.
No.
Thank you.
Since you were the person that just got elected, and you are a man, right?
There's some towns that use Select Person, that's why I mentioned it.
Yes, Select Person, maybe.
And, but, you know, if it's, I would prefer either if you're a Select Man or a Select Woman, you know, it could be addressed that way.
But just because some towns use it doesn't mean it's statute-like.
Right.
Or it's within the statute, so I can certainly look into that. And yes, Linda, do you follow that today?
Yep.
We got an update from Chris Remillard on a report from Old Route 13, where there was a vehicle parked there. They took some action and gave a warning to the person that was parking on that section of road, and the person kindly moved their car very quickly, and they'll keep following up in the area to make sure that that doesn't continue happening, at least by the same people, and they'll give out the appropriate amount of warnings until they've exhausted that section, and then if they need to do some more work, they will, but they handle...
For the record, the police department did excellent in the way they handled that whole situation. I talked to the police officer, supervising police officer at the time, and I don't think they, they couldn't have done it any better. They did great. So kudos to the police department, the way they handled it.
Okay, we also have one more piece of paperwork that was given to us by the town administrator here, addressed to the Select Board from the trustee of the trust funds. They want appointment of an alternative, an alternate trustee to the trust funds, here's Select Board. Because we are new in our position, former trustee John Casey has offered to assist us through the learning period. At this time, we're requesting to appoint, an appointment of John Casey as an alternate to the trustee of the trust fund for a period of one year. I don't have a problem with that, that learning period is kind of a tough thing to do. Does Linda need to make an appointment for John?
She already did, yeah.
She did, okay. This is more notification than anything, so we'll have that as part of our package. And the last thing I have here on this, it'll probably come up under public comment, I'm assuming, Don, you're here to speak to the Select Board?
Yes.
Why don't you come up at this time, Don, we'll try and get that taken care of.
Okay, Don Larson, 32 First Street Drive, and I'm here to represent the Garden Club.
Okay.
And we did the lights for the St. Patty's Day, they came down today.
Yep.
And what we're looking at is basically four holidays, Valentine's, St. Patty's Day, Halloween, and Christmas.
Okay.
And in the future.
I see you guys have revised your list pretty decent on that. And we're going to skip Easter at least this year because of the COVID still...
Yeah, you know, somewhere down the line, we'll do an option maybe, but we'll come and talk to you about it.
Okay.
But we've got to be able to get back out onto the comments, to make it functional, and be a day-time thing.
Okay.
We'll have to see what happens with Old Home Day, if it's cleared up, and if everybody's getting their shots, so...
And did you, you reached out to your board, just let them know that we'd like to make the decision as the different items come up? And everybody seems okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, so just so you know, it's not a blanket coverage then, for those holidays?
No.
Yeah, he's going to come before us on each one.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that brought a concern is, the community center, when it was built, was actually going to be a community center.
Right.
Any venue could operate here, as long as the school didn't have anything going on. But then one group took control of a lot of the other nights and some of the weekends when the school wasn't there, and then it didn't become a community center, and people forgot that it was a community center. And that's why they went from someone paying to use that facility, to the $1,000 we give for the maintenance, and, you know, the kitchen area, was because the money they used to generate from having weddings or whatever, that they paid, went into a slush fund to cover those expenses as they occurred. But once that organization took over, there was no community center. So it's even forgotten about, it becomes a joke with everybody, we have a community center we can't use. And, you know, I don't know what other groups might ever come up and want to use the bandstand or whatever, but I think, you know, giving someone blanket coverage for all those holidays would be a disservice to someone else that might come ahead of you and say, hey, I'd like to do something. I don't know, is a scout troop in town, or 4H, or PTO, or any future group that would come along, but I think, you know, doing it as you come in, if you come in and you say you'd like to use it, and you're the first one in here, I guess you're going to get a chance to use it, you know, I don't see a problem. But doing it each day is easier, and then we can post it on the town website that, you know, this is going to happen, and you probably won't have to worry about complaints, because if someone asks, we usually would say, usually it's about a day or two that the event is there, you know?
We have another comment in the back?
Yeah, I just said, I noticed that the lights are off, and that the bandstand is clean now, and to be honest with you, I like the look of it that way, because it's been four months that it's been decorated, and it gets to be old after a while.
Okay, well, you noted, well, thank you, Don, I appreciate you coming in, and I asked Woody to give you a number of a tree guy, I'm not sure, you might already know of him, but he did some work down in Woody's area there, and I just asked him in case you need some backup numbers for your...
Okay, I've got like six people, so, or six companies, and then Mario that did the Bellator, I haven't got his number yet, and a couple others.
Do you know who this one, he's done work for the town before, he's a Dunbar resident, Dunbar-based community, the thing is, we'd like to make sure that, at least they're aware of it, if they want to bid on it, bid on it.
Yeah, I've got United, who's local.
That's who we use.
United, good, excellent.
Just be careful Mario doesn't drop the trees on me at butter. I'm not running through that. I know nothing. Thank you, Don.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Okay, I guess we'll go to stack of appointment paperwork, right?
Okay, I have one question before you start that. You had emailed me and said most likely the selectmen's reps will be the same.
Yeah, because there's...
There's one stack of appointment papers you're not signing tonight, no, so that could Tefka, papers, because those are signed by that board. You, David, not were the selectmen's rep last year, are you going to continue with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I've done on those stacks is, I went and made up whoever was selectmen's rep last year.
Yep.
I automatically made the appointment paper.
Yeah, we documented it.
So if you're going to change it, we pull it aside and I'll redo it.
Okay, yeah, if we see any little flag, we'll change it at that time, right? Is there any other public comment before I get into these?
I...
Okay.
I'll let you come back to this later.
Yeah, yeah. All right, are you going to start reading them, Bob, or how do you want to do them?
Okay, you don't have the list there?
I do, you want me just to go through them?
Sure.
Okay. So these are the appointment papers we've got from the town clerk. Cemetery trustee alternatives, Linda Gray, 2021, Judy Queef, 2021, deputy town clerk, Hope Akers.
RC, sorry.
RC, 2023.
And that should be 2024.
All right, let's fix that.
So... You've got it right on this one.
Oh, I heard it, it's right on the paper, but I...
Yeah, this one's right, the 2024.
Okay, conservation commission, Darlene Jarvis, 2024, Stanley Soul, 2024, energy committee, John Stevens, 2024, Dana Lavoy, 2024, highway safety committee, Jeff Crosby, 2022, Robert Martell, 2022, Dan Svetl, 2022, Jonathan M. Wigan, 2022. Do we want to add Chris Remillard on that highway safety committee?
It's up to you, I think it only needs to be four members.
Yeah, but we have, he's doing a stand-in for the chief right now, so I'm thinking it might not be a bad idea.
In lieu of, in lieu of the chief or...
Or we add him.
I'm sure the chief might appreciate not having to deal with it. Whatever you decide, it's up to you.
I think why don't we add him, just so he can cover in his response, and he's on there, so let's add Chris.
Okay, I'll do that paper up.
And I'll double-check, I'm sure he won't have a problem with it, but that way there he can work with that committee.
Okay.
Historical, historical awareness committee. Paula, is it Mangini?
Mangini.
Mangini for 2024, Linda Nickerson, 2024, Kenneth Squeazy, 2023, and William Zeller, the DES liaison for 2022. Old Home Day Committee, Kenneth Kerber and Don Larson, Town Forest Committee, Patrick Bone, Woody, 2024. Planning Board, Kenneth Squeazy, 2024, Allison Valaries, 2024, David Knoll, ex-officio for the Planning Board, 2022, Michael Eskaminsky, alternate ex-officio, 2022. Town Hall Restoration Committee, Mary Sue Bracy, Donald Larson, Edith Larson, Kurt McDormitt, Shelley Westenberg. There's no date on those.
They're one-year terms.
One-year term.
Sorry.
That's okay. Trustee of the trust funds, John Casey Jr. as an alternate for 2022. Zoning Board Adjustment, Dan Delpr, 2024, and John Trotter, 2024. Joint Loss Management, no papers necessary.
Well, in that stack, is there a selectmen rep for Energy Committee? I don't know.
That's Mike.
Energy, yeah.
Yeah.
Am I to read up the appointment paper but not put it on the list?
Energy. And he's our new solar guy, so he's going to stay on there.
That's a member.
It was, is that one? You got the last one?
There is still some more that we're waiting to hear from.
So you put the committees in an alphabetical order?
Climate motion to accept it.
Okay, you have your committee.
Okay. You haven't heard from Town Hall Restoration Committee, me?
You wouldn't, okay, I think the paper's there, aside from Mike.
See, rep, that would be Michael, I'm sure.
I just didn't include that on the list.
Okay, buddy.
So Town Hall Restoration...
You've got Clem Madden and Margaret Watkins.
Right, I haven't heard from them yet, and I'm still waiting on three for Old Home Day Committee.
I did hear from Margaret today, in fact.
Oh, okay.
So I know Margaret wants to stay on there.
She does.
And Clem Madden, he's taken a little bit of a backseat, but I believe he wants to be on there as well.
So I won't make up his paper yet until he confirms.
And how about Old Home Day Committee? Are we still doing one of those?
Yeah, but it's on the first page.
Oh, so it's still waiting to hear.
Yeah, but on the first page. Ken Kerber and Don Larson.
Oh, okay, and you're just waiting here back and forth.
There's your red, oh, sorry.
All right.
Did you read off Tony, uh...
I did.
Woody Bones for the Town Forest, okay. I encourage you.
If you want to sign, I will go ahead and make up that appointment paper for Chris Remillard for Highway Safety, and Margaret Watkins for Town Hall.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all nominations as delineated by the chair of the Select Board.
Second. Motion to be made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town Hall Restoration, you have one for me in there, as the Select Board's rep.
You were on that last year?
I think so, yeah.
I think you're the one that's on there, there's one, there's yellow paper in the back of it.
Okay. If there's none, we'll do it later.
I think there is one. All right, I'll go get those other two ready.
You signing one, hitting, Bob?
Let me start signing one.
I'll need two more.
Meanwhile, I think we need a motion for a chair.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion, I can nominate, Dave Nolte as our chair, Bob.
And I make a second to that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
He couldn't look good and abstained. Okay, and this one's Michael.
The nominations I don't know.
I'll start with that.
Let's hurry, Slattery, oh, my God! I'm looking at this stuff, I don't know if it's going to be good or not. Look, it's readable, doesn't it, like?
Yeah.
We have to sign three of these? I have three different, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, how do you know? You just have to be the reader for them.
You learn, you learn.
I know.
Got to get yourself a stamp, Dave.
I know, okay.
Mine's up here, the date each one, too.
Put my stamp on the end of that camel, kaboom.
Jeff wanted it used yesterday during our joint laws meeting.
There you go. That's that one.
Chris Remillard, in what town does he live?
Concord.
Concord, thank you.
Is he Concord or Bo?
Concord.
He says Judo Cabor, right?
Yeah, Concord.
I don't know. I'm 90% sure Concord.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
If he can, if he can afford Bo, he can afford Dunbar.
So you would be a regular member or an alternate?
Often.
Is an alternate going to get the vote, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it helps them meet a quorum, if they need to.
And that's one here, it's still a question.
I figured he might be filling in for a period of time here, so...
And the thing is, um...
It'll be a process anyway, right?
We're going to want to be looking at, remember, the chief's return is coming up in January, so what we want to do is probably delineate a replacement several months ahead of time, in coordination with the chief.
You all right?
Stretch yours on the front.
Leo, did you measure the stone yet?
I already have, yeah. Yeah, actually, I was going to figure it out for you today.
Okay.
Figure it out, I think you're going to be close.
Millstone?
Hmm?
Yeah, millstone, yeah.
So is the Vermont millstone just not something that ever happened?
I don't know, maybe Donna had the wrong information, you know, I don't know.
I heard in Boston likes to steal stuff from us while we miss the top one.
Yeah, you're ex officio, aren't you, oh, I forgot, yeah. Here.
I'll send it right back, yeah.
Here's that one there. They only like to take the cannons.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not the only ones that wanted, the Goscombe ones are too.
People in Boston with all their unexploded ordnance there, they wouldn't want any explosives in either town. Years ago, did you hear anything about them finding more ordnance in Boston? About fifteen, twenty years ago?
Really?
Because it used to be a bombing range.
Yeah.
Is that why they had that, um, air, there's an air?
It's a tracking station.
And that's what, what you're talking about where they would have had.
The bombing range, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there's quite a bit of woods around here.
I know somebody who used to work there. That was only one of three in our entire country, you know that?
Yeah, we worked there, I worked there for the company, I worked with, my other brother Vic was there. And you can't even go to the bathroom without being on somebody's screen, you know? Yeah, and I remember the, one of the guys going in there said, use the far stall. It was a tip, stay out of the camera.
So while you're signing, I'll fill you in on a couple of other light things that won't be too distracting to you while you're trying to write. I notified everybody who, uh, who won the election. And four of them have come in so far to be sworn in.
Including Mike?
Mike, yeah, Hope, yes, Hope's sworn in. Uh, one of the members is out of town, and he will be out of town for a while longer, so we are going to do a Skype or a uh, FaceTime, because that executive order is still in place, we've checked with Secretary of State on that. Absentee ballots have come in for the primary?
No.
Yep. They came in today.
What's her date on that again?
April twenty second. So we got a hundred and fifty Democrat and a hundred and fifty Republican ballots, absentee ballots. So these are just the absentees, uh, regular. But Bo's absentees were misprinted, they could be redone. They had Bo on the outside and Dunbar on the inside. Riddula emailed me and I ripped our book box open right away and checked and ours are good.
You have a nice crack here in the side.
I'm signing on this.
I keep you straight on the line. You wanna book them out?
No, I don't have time. I hope that's both Vermont.
Right, uh, dog notices went out electronically on Tuesday. And so far, we've licensed five hundred and twenty eight dogs. Got great responses.
Just to let you know, we're not gonna rest on our dogs this year.
Don't say that, don't say that.
Really? I shouldn't say that.
See, you can't even ticket a car or a town, ticket someone for speed and get any revenue for the town, at least for dogs, you can get a revenue.
Right?
All right, now, so we're right on top of the dog thing, so we may not see as much in civil forfeitures this year. Hope's really trying to get on top of keeping them licensed. And the police department's been great about following up as well. There are a couple, money wise, I don't, I'm sure Lean gives you figures as to how we're doing every month. And if you just, I only made one copy for you guys, I thought you'd like to pass around. The difference from January first, twenty twenty, to March eighteenth, twenty twenty, as compared to that same timeframe, timeframe in twenty twenty one.
To your revenues?
Yes. Uh, just a little history, you know, comparison, it looks like we're about five thousand dollars less this year than we were for that same number of days last year, but that's about five, it's like forty eight hundred dollars overall. And.
Less?
Less, yeah.
I thought you were doing it to us because you were hired.
But you had a president.
But I've given you the, I mean, I just don't wanna give you the fluffy stuff.
You had a presidential primary in that year also, correct?
Right, but that wouldn't have anything to do with our revenues, though.
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, you're right.
I usually. We have to buy a new car, please, support Dunbar.
That's okay.
Support, support Dunbar, buy a new car.
Exactly.
The report that you guys get is usually a quarterly report, so you won't get that until the end of the month.
But there was one interesting note on this, if you look at the eReg convenience fees, this is how many people, this is the number of online requests we get. So in twenty twenty, for that three month timeframe, we had ninety five, twenty twenty one, we had three hundred and four. And that was ninety five, that was just when COVID was starting. I just thought those would be fun numbers for you to look at. You study, and you can, you can keep that date, I can make another one. Uh, also some other numbers, in my budget, I budgeted four hundred and fifty dollars for Hope to attend the joint loss um, certification class. And we can save that four hundred and fifty, because they just sent me a letter saying they just can't figure out a way to make it happen this year. I've not yet heard about the Town Clerk conference that happens in the fall in North Conway.
That was canceled last year, right?
That was conference. That was canceled last year.
Yeah.
So it might wind up being canceled again.
Okay.
Okay. Other stuff, Jonathan, I watched the YouTube video last week, and Mike, you had a concern?
I think so, I was gonna dress that later on for the meeting, I can dress it up if you like.
No, it's, oh, I just wanna make sure.
No, it's very positive, just to let you know, remember my concerns last week at the, about the, about the election and counting the votes? Uh, I had a discussion with moderator this morning, and the moderator alleviated all my concerns. He was aware of the non-mask situation, he was monitoring them, if they were one side, so I was very happy with, at least was aware of that. I wasn't sure, I was aware of it, I just noticed it at the end of the meeting, like, where's this mask? And I explained to him that in the past that we, um, essentially would not allow anyone in the building without a mask on. He, he was like, it was contradictory to his opinion, but he was well aware of watching and monitoring the situation, so I'm very happy with that. And as far as, um, counting votes, uh, the gentleman who was on the ballot was not counting his votes at all, he assured me of that. He also said that in the future, uh, any selectman who's actually on the ballot can actually help count votes, and not in his, uh, that was, he, I could have counted the schoolboy example. Or I could have counted something else, but not my own. And the thing is, normally how we, normally we'd have one supplement, count, have Joe Milliot count, help him that. I mean, that's probably not the, that's where you can manipulate numbers and a potential for fraud could happen, so that's, he probably would not have me there, but definitely help out. So I felt a little, I'm sitting there looking at all the work going on, I'm thinking to myself, like, why am I wasting my time here, I could be helping work it, and I could have. However, it just wasn't a clear, a clear path, and he, we talked about that, so he alleviated all my concerns and would.
I'm so glad, because you know, you had brought it up, and he said he would call you.
He did.
And, and I said, well, you know, it got brought up publicly, so just in, you know, like, for transparency, um, so that the public's not concerned.
Absolutely.
And you were right, it was perception.
Right, and the thing is, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm convinced that the election was honest, and the thing is, there was no hanky panky going on, and I thought those, uh, all my concerns were alleviated.
Okay, I'm so glad he could do that, and another note, I don't know if you noticed, my husband was counting ballots.
Right.
He was counting school ballots.
Right.
Um, the moderator and I always make sure that ballot counters are not counting any family, ballots that a family member is on, is always separate. But you're right, perception.
Right.
Um, so maybe in the future, we can train our new moderator to make that announcement, yes, this person's on that ballot, but he's not counting, but he's counting school or zoning or whatever.
Because we all, we all could have helped in some form or fashion instead of sitting there.
Well, Linda, in the past, Fred always allowed that.
I will bring up, I think this happened to you also.
What's that?
We were told to stay away from that, during the elections, and we weren't gonna be counting. I was told personally, couldn't, you were told the same thing. So if we'd have known, we could have counted some other ballots, because, you know, it's a long night when you're just sitting there doing nothing.
They didn't even want me in the building.
I, I think this, you know, I think especially for selectmen, and I guess at that hour of the day, you're not even thinking, because you are so well known and so famous. I think maybe he's just, was thinking more of the perception of having a selectman in there while the ballots are being calculated. Fortunately, there was no race, so there was, you know.
In, in his defense, though, he was brand new. So, you know, it was probably his reaction to keeping things clean, and, and that's what happened with Dave, because I remember him doing the same thing, and he wasn't around.
And the thing is, my concern about the mask, uh, that's something we can debate, but I think is, uh, he was fully aware of the situation, and he was watching them the entire time, so.
Yeah, and he was, he does keep a good eye on things.
Because the thing is, um, unfortunately, when I, I was a greeter for the last, for fall election, I had to turn people away wearing just a face shield. I gave a choice, turn away or put a mask on, and majority of people would put a mask on, but the shield by itself was not satisfactory.
It's not satisfactory, really.
It's to protect everybody, the all-town personnel.
We've learned so much since, from a year ago, from when COVID first came out. Other thing I wanted to address with you is printer, um, as you know, my printer cracked out, I'm still getting some quotes, boy, I'm getting very high quotes, so Lean, I'm gonna work with you a little bit more, I just don't wanna jump on a printer for the sake of getting one.
You know, I would say, I would recommend highly that we're through Lean, but Joe Marie is excellent. Let Joe Marie do some research for you.
It's, well, the thing is, it's gotta pass motor vehicle.
Right, no, let, let, let her, let her do the, uh, you tell her the specifications, what you need, and she'll go out and find it for you at a great price.
Okay.
We also have some warrant, warrant money left that hasn't expired, that's only, you know, still four years out. Unfortunately, things are getting, we're finding that things are getting more expensive every year, and it's possible that when we have to replace a server, there may not be enough money there to replace a server. But you still have to work today, so you have to take, you address the things that you need.
And your office, and her office is so critical, I would say, don't wait on it, get, get Joe Marie on it soon.
We're also thinking of the size of the printer. We can get a standalone printer, uh, and it would be the same size we have now, the one that we need to replace. But we like the idea of a everything printer, an all-in-one, that copies and scans and prints, a bigger one, because right now, Hope's gotta come right to behind where I'm sitting.
To scan, right.
To scan, to photocopy, and when Lean said the Judy's printer was what, eight hundred?
Yeah, it was very reasonable.
About eight hundred dollars?
Yeah.
I thought, wow, that'd be better than the thirteen hundred I was being quoted, so.
Is that what's compatible with what you need to do with the state?
Well, uh, the state gave us a list of HPs, and I think this will be compatible. Um, so I think that'll work, the problem is how much space it takes up on the table, and the fact that Hope and I are so short, because we have to have two trays. So as soon as you have two trays, the printer gets higher, and we'd need a little step stool there in front of it, or it might be a little wide. So Hope and I have been taking measurements and trying to think of where we would put it or where, so we're working on it, and I just wanted you to know, it's not going to the bottom of the pile.
One of the companies, Amazon is, can be a little bit expensive on this particular, uh, IT type stuff. Newegg, Newegg is another company that offers a lot of discounts on IT equipment.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll look into that some more, but we, we really do need to get a second printer just for our own efficiency. And there was one last thing, I was, I'm sorry that I couldn't be part of the discussion to reopen the building, uh, or to reopen my office, and I, as you probably know, I have opted not to open to the public, and I just wanted to come and explain to you why, because, you know, it is, people will view it. It's not to be difficult, but I do still have great concerns about the, not only the COVID, but the size of this office and the layout of this building, and the fact that it's really hard for people to stay apart. And I'm just so concerned about the safety of my co, myself, my coworkers, and the people coming in here. And I, and I felt that opening the doors, before we can keep windows open and keep air circulating, um, probably wasn't safe for, for any of us just yet. So I'm gonna hold off on opening to the public, it's gonna be challenging because the doors are open. But I, I've had now people who are coming in for appointments, because that's how I'm scheduling, and with the doors open, there are people coming in, and I'm noticing as soon as they come in, there are people that, they scooch right to less than six feet, because they, they're getting in line, and it, uh, it could wind up being a problem, and I'll try to keep an eye on that and report it to you.
Yeah, we knew that that might be an issue, and that, you know, everybody going by is gonna have to keep an eye on that, you, Lean, whoever goes by, if people are getting too close, you'll have to let them know. But we did wanna start this soft opening, because the state's opening up all restaurants, they're doing a soft opening. So we're trying to do this slowly and kind of work back into it and, uh, let people know that, we haven't changed anything, it's a transfer station as yet, but we're gonna start some of those things as we go as well.
Do you anticipate opening, um, on Fridays or opening on, uh, the evening hours?
No, not yet, there's, first things first, and that's, first, we just gotta get a handle on what we're dealing with today.
Well, opening evening hours would still be by appointment, would they not, on Fridays? Because you, you basically reduced the number of hours that these people can come in.
I haven't reduced the number of hours, it's the same number of hours that I was open before COVID, I just changed the start and end times, it's the same number of hours. But, you know, evening then Judy's here.
I've had complaints to me, uh, and the thing is, I say constructively, I don't wanna say negatively, and the thing is, uh, I say for all the offices, Lean, you too, the, the telephone's not being answered in a timely fashion, or not answered at all, or they're always busy. And, uh, if there's chit chat going on the phone, um, we gotta hold it to a minimum, and so we can, the people can get through. And, and that's, to me, some people find that very frustrating.
It is frustrating for me, well, we only have two incoming lines, and if two people in the building are on the phone, then the line's busy.
For what it's worth, I just put out what it's worth to be, I, I don't know, it's just an FYI.
And so, and that's fine, I mean, I can't change the number of lines, if I do have somebody who's there by appointment and the phone is ringing, unless I'm expecting a callback from the state, I'm not going to pick it up, because that person took the time to come in and make an appointment, and I feel that if I pick up the phone, then that person's cutting in line.
Understood.
And they usually open with, quick question for you, and ten minutes later, I'm still on the phone with their quick question.
I think Lean has expressed the same, very similar thoughts.
That is, yes, that happens a lot, so I can't do anything about the phone, and one of the problems is, people will call, but they don't leave a message.
How would you recommend, the thing is, um, we got the public here, so.
Right, right.
The best way, if I needed to come in, what would be the best way to come in, make an appointment, or to call and leave a message? What would be the quickest, the best way you'd recommend to someone?
Well, if you come in and make an appointment, like, you're already there.
Okay.
And if I don't have anybody there, it'd be really creepy of me or crappy of me to say, leave and make an appointment.
Okay.
I would prefer that people looked at the website before they came in, every time I go anywhere, I check the website to see if their hours have changed, if their, whatever's changed.
Okay.
And people need to take that responsibility.
Absolutely, that's why I wanna, I wanna give a procedure.
I would prefer that, if they email me, that's wonderful, because that I can, I don't get interrupted for all, I have a time when I sit down and I check my emails, and I respond to them. And we can back and forth, how does this time work for you, works great, good, I've got you down, period. Email's great.
I, I think, um, appointments actually, instead of someone coming in and waiting forever in line, they have a specific time, I think that's kudos to me, some positives that way. But again, it's just that, um, some people found it difficult to. But again, it's just that some people found it difficult to even get in and make an appointment. So you expressed a few ways, so we'll leave it at that.
So nobody, did you have a question?
A comment. I hear, I see this all over the place now, and I, my attitude is, people need to be patient. Everybody's dealing with this at the same time. Some people are patient, some people aren't. They're on it their way right away, and it's not right. And, you know, they're working hard, they're doing stuff, and she said, they got two lines.
Well, that's why at least I wanted to bring it up in a public session, so-
Yeah, but, you know, people do need to be patient, you know?
Yeah, so we, you got, I, you just-
You have 30 days to register your vehicle, come on, you know?
So as far as the state opening up, the Department of Motor Vehicles has no plans at this time to open their doors to the public. And they are never open in the evening, and people still manage to get things done. I don't know about evening hours, right, if I have evening hours, I can tell you what will happen. The doors will be open, and Judy and I will both be here, and people will form a line in the hallway, and they'll hang out in front of Judy's counter, and that's not fair to Judy. You know, it is, there's just so many things that unless you're here all day, you, you just won't see it. And I can anticipate a lot of that happening. I just think it's safer for everybody right now to just kick back, we gotta go with this flow. Also, there are two new variants out that I've got concerns with, that even if you've been vaccinated, you're not gonna be immune maybe to the new variants.
Have you gotten your shots?
I got my second shot. That's why I wasn't here last Thursday night, I was recovering from shot number two.
Okay.
So, right now, we're just all gonna have to learn to live with it, there's, I know people are so anxious to get back to normal, but forcing, forcing doors open, forcing businesses open, isn't gonna make it happen.
Your plan is to go back to your original hours, though, correct?
Original hours is in-
The hours you worked last year, let's say.
The number of hours hasn't changed.
No, but you're gonna eventually open up in the evening on Thursday evenings again.
I hope and I are discussing that. And if we do open in the evening, it will be strictly by appointment. I did send a blast out to the Town Clerk Association, how many towns are still open, how many are closed? I haven't been able to tabulate all the responses I've gotten yet, but I've gotten over 75. And just scanning and looking at them, most of them are still by appointment only. A few clerks have mentioned that the public actually likes the appointments, because they don't have to wait in line, they come in, and they know it's their time. I had somebody today who had something really complicated, so I scheduled a nice big block of time for him. It was his time, and somebody walked in and just decided to join in the conversation, and, you know, that's what happens too. And you guys don't see that, but that was, that was a difficult one to deal with.
Okay.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Is there anything else you need from me? Good?
I'm good. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for one more public comment.
Yeah, just as long as you have an organization coming in to ask to use that bandstand. Hope you guys are gonna think about maybe having some time limits on that? Because as I said earlier, it's like been four months that things been covered with stuff, and-
I think you'll see it's gonna be just like we just did.
That was, this was perfect.
Start date, end date, lights out like now.
That makes sense.
Certain amount of hours.
Yeah.
And that's why we really decided to have, come in each time. That way, the public also knows the hours, if we're gonna allow it or not allow it. So when they come in each time, it may seem like it's laborsome, but all that will be explained.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's a good idea.
Any amount of hours that they're leaving the lights on.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, have some control over it.
You know, you have, some people have complained, because the library at one time, when they had the light on all the time, they went to a motion-activated light, only because the lights weren't shining in somebody's windows all that time, you know?
And it gives an opportunity for other organizations who may want to do something. It opens up, opens us, opens other organizations, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yes, the election in April, is that the last week of April?
April 22nd?
22nd, yeah.
So that's April vacation, correct, at the school?
I don't know for sure.
If it's the last week, you-
Okay, because I talked to the head custodian, just something you might want to know, is that there's a project going on that week in the gymnasium. At least, potentially, that's what he told me.
They redoing floors or something?
They're changing out all the lights. So, I mean, I don't know if, obviously, no one's talked to the school, so somebody might want to make a connection with them, because I know I talked to him, and on my end, we're gathering up equipment to pick up, the equipment that they are, containers and stuff, to pick up the bulbs and lights and all that stuff.
Do you want to have Rainey check with them?
I was gonna say, we should probably have Rainey deal with that, and I will get in touch with them.
Okay, good enough.
He's in Maine.
Yes, I-
Tell him to put his foot down.
What was that?
Tell him to put his foot down.
Tell him to put his, I will.
Alas, right, he's gonna do it.
I know.
I mean, one thing is that it should be very small, so I mean, if they didn't want to have the data-
Right, I don't know what his plan was, what the timeframe was.
We'll work with them.
I don't know what his timeframe was, I know he mentioned it to me that week, so, and I thought I heard Linda say it was the last week, but-
Is that a Tuesday, I would imagine?
It's a Tuesday.
So. Like I say, you might just want to touch base, because I didn't know they've been planning this for a little bit, so maybe-
It's not the last week.
He's in or isn't it?
The 22nd is the, the third week.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Actually, it might be all set, then.
We could be.
But it's still, double checking it.
It's worth looking into.
With Rainey's luck, it won't be.
She's either out of snow.
Another thing.
Okay, public comments all set?
I got one more, on a later note. I, well, okay, and this is gonna be a public one, on a later note. Did you discuss your summer schedule yet?
We did. Didn't I say?
I'm so sorry I missed it, while I was probably still down there, because I was gonna make a suggestion. That given it was seven months long, you should call it a seasonal schedule instead of a summer schedule.
Well, we already done that last week, so next year, we'll try that. We're trying to make it eight months too, by the way.
That was all I had.
All right, we're still taking evening hours, by the way.
You're still taking evening hours for?
Selectmen.
Oh.
Our first savings will still be here.
So is the, is the building department gonna have evening hours?
No, this was just a lighter note. Okay, anything for the town administrator? Bring it back to the board, Bob?
I'm all set right now.
Mike?
I've already talked about the town moderator, talked to him some-
You got all your stuff out of the way, huh?
Yeah, I sure did.
I have one thing, I just wanted to give an update to the-
Well, I do want to talk one thing about Kelsey Road.
The board of selectmen, I'd like to give them an update. I was at the planning board meeting, and the countryside golf course project came in. And that project, the first waiver passed where it was made a boulevard, so they'd have two-way traffic going in the project, because there's 243 or 49 acres accessed off of one easement to the property, or one, one common area, instead of two. And so, that one did pass, because they set up a boulevard, but the one where they wanted to go down and have an increased grade to 10%, set at 8%, that waiver failed. So their plan didn't even get to the substantially complete phase, because that waiver failed. And that changes engineering and the sites, distances, and lots, for the entire project, so they asked to have it continued to May 18th, so that they could look at that engineering.
How many units did this come down with?
They were down to 43 instead of 46. So that project is on hold for a couple of months anyway, and they're gonna look at the grading issue. The town engineer looked at it and decided that we should not try and change the restriction we already have as a town to go below the steeper than 8%. Because there's some roads on the boulevard that traverse between the two sides, so people can go over their lots, their house lots, and those would be on quite a slope, and he thought that they'd be pretty slippery the first couple of houses of storm. So that's the update for that.
I have one, I just want to put on the agenda for this, for our seasonal schedule.
Yeah.
Kelsey Road, as you know, this, this winter, we've had some issues with Kelsey Road, it starts plowing.
Yeah.
What I like to do this year is, I like to get the three selectmen together, the road agent, and maybe our town attorney. I like to get together and figure out some of our options we could do for making sure we have a smooth, responsive plowing scenario for this winter. I don't want to wait till November, I'd recommend we all do this in maybe early summer. Then, following that strategic meeting, we sit down and invite Mike in, because Mike's involved with the turnaround, where the turnarounds on his property. And come up with a solution that's equitable to all, and it serves both the public and all the residents of Kelsey Road. And I'd like to recommend we start the initial meeting in June sometime, and we can meet in the afternoon, late afternoon, and just get it done, and shortly thereafter, meet with Mike and, and put our heads together and come up with a solution that will work for all.
Yeah.
Bob, what are your thoughts?
You know, you're just gonna have the attorney review that, or do you, are you gonna have the attorney attend?
I think, I have no, I, I'm open.
I think have him attend, so that we can have a proactive conversation about options. And not limit ourselves or wait for responses. This way, the road agent and him can talk with the board. And if it does come for subdivision, then it's kind of, it may be a viewpoint, so.
True.
He's just being proactive to next one.
Well, I understand, I just want to make sure, are we getting a review from the attorney, as we have in the past, or are we gonna have him sit in?
I think we'll have him sit in, then we'll get maybe a legal, a legal representation after the fact, but-
No, Mike has, has gone to the planning board for a conceptual design for a subdivision. And part of the conceptual, the board put out a requirement that he have adequate turnaround. And maybe OBE if he proceeds with the turnaround. But I don't want, I don't want, I don't think it's fair to the residents of Kelsey Road, Mike and Dave and all the other residents of Kelsey Road, then we wait till November to come up with a plowing solution. We should be proactive with the solution ahead of time.
I understand where you're going here, and I agree with that, you know?
And the thing is, if he comes up with a subdivision, so be it, and we have a solution, but it's already March, and he hasn't been before the board, so it may be, it may come next month, and we could have something, but I don't want to wait till November and find we have nothing.
I was gonna say, he came in, he came in 2013, and you didn't hear from him. Now you're hearing from him, but you may not see anything, so you gotta have a resolve one way or the other. If he doesn't do anything, you still need a resolve.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's, some of our road agent and his employees and his plowing guys have had a challenge this year, I'll leave it at that, and the thing is, there's no need to have a challenge, we just need to want the roads clear for all.
Except they don't get their calls at 4:00 in the morning.
Exactly. We don't need those, and the thing is, that's where a resident was dissatisfied, and we don't need that, we like to make sure all was satisfied. And I'll leave it at that, so June, I'd target June, if that's all right with the, with the chair?
Yeah.
Can I, I do have one question, now that we're just talking general, did we ever make a motion to appoint the chairman?
We did it when you were getting some of the paperwork, I think.
Dave is the chair.
Okay.
Mike, Mike made the motion, I seconded the motion.
Oh, it was read off the list, and you-
No, when, when Bob was signing and you guys were busy talking, Mike made the motion, and-
Oh, I missed that.
It was on the meeting minutes, because-
Okay, good.
It was kind of quickly, we did it in between everything else, so.
A multitask.
I guess.
Okay, that's all I had, Dave, but I, again, you being a resident of Kelsey Road, it's, I think you're of vested interest in it too.
Yeah.
And I think Mike has a, all residents have a vested interest, making sure that road stays clear for all.
Yeah.
Monte's counting on it.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Still be there.
Page number four, which we made second in favor.